This conference will now be recorded.
But Lord God, we just ask a blessing upon you. Commissioner Campos's family during this time of need and indecision and different things that are going on in their lives. Lord God, as community, I pray that we would be supportive to them and help them in any way that we could. Lord God, I just pray for those who are closest to Mr. Campos that lost a friend, a companion, a mentor. Lord God, I just pray that he was, he was the Christian that you wanted him to be. Lord God, I just pray that this community would band together and support. Lord God, we also thank you for the many blessings of a new year and the new prosperity that is looking forward over us. Lord God, we just thank you for each individual that works here at the City of Livingston. We thank you for each commissioner and their input in this community. Lord God, I just pray that we would be a blessing to this community and to the citizens in it. And Lord God, we just thank you for us on Jesus Christ and Jesus Christ, then we. Amen.
I want to testify to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which this stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I salute the flag of the state of Mexico, the citizens of our perfect friendships among the people.
Before we start it, uh, we didn't have any changes to the agenda, right?
Uh, no, not a change to the agenda. We're talking about the items.
Do I have a motion? Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda submitted.
I'll say that. Second by Commissioner Bernard, is there any questions? There are no questions, roll call Shannon.
Mr. Ball?
Yes.
Mr. Butcher?
Yes.
Mr. Dandy?
Yes.
Mr. Eel.
Yes. Do I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion in consideration of minutes, regular minutes, December 13th, 2021. And special minutes of December 20th, 2021 to approve.
Second, I suppose one day by Mr. Ball, second by Mr. Gandy, is there any discussion? There's no discussion, roll call Shannon.
Mr. Gandy?
Yes.
Mr. Butcher?
Yes.
Mr. Ball?
Yes.
Mr. Eel.
Yes. Mr. Commissioner, staff reports, Shannon, do you have anything to report?
Yes, we had our candidate filing day last Tuesday. And that was qualified, they were qualified on Friday to the Secretary of State's office. We have two people in District Three. Robbie Roberts is running. And his name on the ballot will be Howard Doyle Roberts is given name, that's my. And he'll be running against Commissioner Butcher. And then in District Five, we have Elizabeth White running. And next tomorrow is write-in candidate filing day. So only one that wants to, to become a candidate under the write-in, on the write-in ballot. Will need to do that tomorrow, 29th and 5th.
Is there any questions, Father?
Yes, sir. Yes, I have a question for Shannon, how was the audit?
On my part, I've submitted, I think I've submitted everything that they've asked for. I don't know about the finance part of it.
Right.
And I really haven't heard too much back because I think they're pretty busy, just going on everything. Yeah.
Thank you, Commissioner. Put on Ms. Kennedy, treasure.
Um, yeah, I am Poni Kennedy, so I'm the new finance director. And um, we are really just getting into the audit. We had a CPA come in last week and sit with us. That we're kind of using to help contract, gather the information that they're needing. He is working remotely in our systems. Um, so that he's actually able to pull a lot of those reports and things that they're going to need. So that's going to help take some, some of the burden off of Shannon and off the girls. But the CPAs will be able to directly retrieve what they're needing. Um, so that's where we're at with the audit. Of course, we've got quarter end information that's going to be coming up too at the end of this month. So a lot going on, especially with me just coming in last Monday. Um, so really just kind of getting our feet underneath us. And that's really what we've got to report for me.
Is there any questions, Father?
I don't have anything at the moment.
Just to recap, Ms. Kennedy said, yes, it's remotely. During COVID, they were here and it was a little bit more simplified when they were here. That part about being remotely, we said an info, it's not correct info. We said it's a communication, sometimes get communication barriers when you do a process like that. So I think that's one of the biggest headaches right now on the whole process. But normally we have our audits, they come in here, they do it within 30 days and they're out. Uh, since this is all remotely, a lot of docs, not just pages, hundreds of pages are sent to them, reviewed. They send, but don't send the correct data, they request other data. So it's, it's a puzzle, especially for the ladies that, that like, Ms. Kennedy had said that everybody's pretty much fresh. At this process, so it's going to be, it's going to be a process. And plus, we have our order due by January 31st or second quarter, so they're pretty busy right now.
Chief, Mayor Commissioners, just want to give an update. Um, I have a position open at the fire department, I have one of the fire chiefs resigned. So it will be going out probably the end of this week for filling that vacancy. Um, at the senior citizens, kind of a segue into this one. The case count right now in the county has gone up for COVID right now. Um, and so looking at the, the numbers that we've seen as of Friday. Um, the county had a total of 145 new cases, which is pretty interesting considering there's not any routine testing being done. So these are all patient, most of them are all patients that are coming in and having to set up appointments because they are sick. Um, so with that, we've kind of looked at different options within the city. Um, the main concerns are going to be City Hall, uh, the motor vehicle department and as well as the senior citizens. Um, senior citizens with the city has decided, or we've decided to go ahead and shut down. In-person stuff inside the facility, um, starting tomorrow. Um, and hopefully over the next two to three weeks, we'll get out of the spike and we can, we can get back to normal operations. But as of right now, that's kind of the, the game plan to kind of keep the vulnerable population safe is to minimize that risk. Um, they're still going to be offering the pickup meals and the home deliveries will still happen. So we're going to do that. And then the motor vehicle department is going to start, and they've already been doing it, but they're going to require masks upon entering. There's not going to be any limits on size or changes in operational hours that we currently have as of right now. Um, and then as far as City Hall, City Hall will start doing the same thing, requiring masks to come inside. Um, just so we can limit kind of exposures within the city. So other than that, that's all I have.
Do you have any shorthand due to COVID in your department, sir?
Uh, currently I have one employee out right now who's finishing up the last part of their 10-day cycle. So we should have somebody coming, uh, the last person coming back after this week. So that's the only one in our department now within the city. I think over the last three weeks, we've had over 10 cases as city employees. So, um, and they've slowly started coming back after the 10-day quarantine. So.
But they had changed that to five.
They changed it to five, if you're without any symptoms and you forget that they're going to be in a mask for those five days. So a lot of those individuals that were out had gotten doctor's orders that required them to be up for 10 days. So it came out right prior to that five-day change. Yes, sir.
Yeah, the doctors should work.
10 days.
Yeah, that's where we're, we're thinking the same thing, so five days, called the doctors, no, it's 10 days. So that's. Yes. Any other questions for the chief? Other questions, Commissioner Both?
Yes, this Saturday, we lost a good commissioner, a good man, a good compadre. Sentiments, Scotty said, thoughts and prayers, well, to the family. Very, very proud and sort of both. Good man. And uh, much brighter now, I don't know if I brought this up before. Uh, I was reading an article from Police Chief Miranda. Tuesday, October 19th. Officer Casta Mena, Minister of CPR to a baby was able to acquire the baby's air passage and save the child's life. I'd like to say that I'm very proud of Officer Casta Mena. And uh, thank you for your service and I'd also like to say thank you for all our law enforcement, very much appreciate yous.
Thank you, sir, I'll pass that along to. Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Bernard?
Nothing at this time, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Gandy?
Other than simply for the family?
Now, uh, the board and staff knowing human issues and so forth. Janine?
Uh, yes, sir, just a reminder, we will have a special meeting this Thursday at 5:30 for city manager interviews. Uh, we will schedule a special meeting as well on next Tuesday. We will be closed on Monday due to Martha Luther King Jr. Day. Or, yeah, and then on Tuesday, we'll have a special meeting that day. We will vote on approval for city manager. And then there's a couple more items that will go on that agenda. Any questions?
First, we'll elaborate on some of the other items, Chief. Is there any questions for Janine?
Chief Miranda? Mr. Mayor Commissioners, I have five items. First, we continue to fill the chain of command staff. Last meeting, we have filled the school re-solve so position, we have filled the training sergeant position. We have promoted a patrol officer to a detective position. And just today, we promoted two patrol officers to be patrol sergeants. This was done in a transparent process with members of the private sector, the public and outside agencies as part of our promotional boards. No new positions were created. We are filling our management positions to put a structure in place so that we can rebuild our department. The dispatch merger with LCCA is on track. There's been a slight delay due to Santa Fe taking extra time issuing our personnel, their NCIC user licenses. Our officers should be, begin training on the new database within approximately two weeks. Once the training is completed, we can go ahead with the merger. Um, along with that, we have received two bids for equipping our patrol fire EMS units with 20 Panasonic Toughfoot laptop computers. These tie directly to LCCA and our new Spillman database. This is part of our deal with LCCA and it's not costing the city any money. So far, we are under budget. Commissioner Dean Jackson has allotted us up to $150,000 for this project. Um, we have been taking bids for a project to make our parking lot and building more safe. We have been awarded $65,000 from a previously submitted ICIP request. This capital grant provides for better lighting and cameras for our building and erecting a solid fence around our parking lot. This is for employee safety. Some of you may not know this, but in 2019 and 2020, the front of our building was shot at with an assault rifle. And our evidence lot was broken into twice. Finally, I want to let the commission know that Commissioner Paul Campos had expressed his desire to be a chaplain of the City of Livingston Police Department some time ago. I had checked with City Attorney Patrick and he advised that there was no conflict with this. We will give Commissioner Campos's Livingston Police Department Chaplain badge to his family when it arrives. Our department greatly appreciates the support that he always gave us.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions for Chief? Appreciate you. Crystal?
Mayor, Commissioner, magistrate building, the abatement is scheduled to begin the second week of February. Demo will follow immediately after that. Uh, they're wanting to start construction, which would be basically the groundwork would start the first week of April. Uh, so that project should move along well. Uh, cobblestone hotel development, I have an update with Evelyn. She would like to give you guys a report on what's happening with that project. Evelyn Hoguee with the Livingston EDC. Uh, this past Wednesday, we went out and tested the lift station, what should have been a 20-minute test ended up being an eight-hour test. Uh, we did run into some issues due to the fact that the lift station had been sitting there for quite some while, waiting for us to get an approval for inspections through the state. Um, it was kind of uh, clogged up, so they had to bring in a backhoe, take out the ponds, clear it out, bludge the systems out. But we were successfully completed at 4:45 that afternoon. Today, we received certifications of approvals for the lift station. Uh, we also got notification, I believe Thursday or Friday, that the utilities, when the electrician went out there and connected all electricity for the lift station. Uh, the utilities were open under the City of Livingston's name. So I believe that was open back in December, so I don't know who would be in charge of checking the charges on the lift station. But just know that that's for the lift station by the Livingston Trust. I did speak to the developer over the weekend. He mentioned that they would be meeting, I believe, uh, at the end of March to discuss further conduct potential on the hotel. Any questions for me?
Other than that, one elaborate on the lift stations, I did, as a preventative measure, measures. So that doesn't reoccur, but what happens if a sand gets inside the, their station. So when Ramirez and Sunstars on the Jackson have been, uh, logic, they'll, uh, put their two-inch, excuse me, not two-inch, a four-inch, uh, two-foot wide base around the lift station. So that with no water trickles in with sand and so forth. Getting that coffee, not going to clog everything up, it'll clog up the apartments and everything else. So that should, should take care of that, um, I'll do, I think it's a little ways out, but you know, sink it in, same measure.
Just to elaborate on your clogging, when we did jet these systems, we did back up by manholes and it took several hours for it to go back down. So the system was backed up, just even it being down for an hour or two, but we did back up by manholes.
Yeah, so the cost, companies like that easily pay for it, so as a prevention measure, and address that.
Thank you.
Did we, did we achieve our money back from that?
Good question. Um, I did speak to Eddie over the weekend and he was telling me that utilities, we did get confirmation that they were returned to the city. We will now need to invoice down the, I would need to give whoever was in charge or the file or whoever made the contract to see what the expenditures were. Um, on our end, it was 175,000 and whatever was exceeded was charged back to Eddie. But at this point, I couldn't tell you the exact number. Um, I know originally when we started the project, it was going to be about $145,000, 245,000. Um, and so we need to definitely invoice him for the expenses. But at this point, we're going to need to sit behind and go through all the invoices and make sure that it was charged correctly to the right account. That would be the next step. I don't know if you want me to wait until the audit's over or what would you like for me to do?
I think that'd be something you'd want to get on as soon as possible.
Yeah, if you could get that, maybe get on your side of it, maybe. They're adequately staffed, so they should, should be able to.
Yeah, I was just, the other items I have, we will be discussed when they come up on the agenda.
If you want to elaborate on the special meeting or you want to wait?
Uh, no, that'll be, because the special meeting is going to be basically whenever the state gets us that official change order.
And so possibly that's what we're talking about, possibly on Tuesday, we get the change order on some mainstream, uh, all the mainstream projects. That's why the special meeting will be on Tuesday approved, additional spending on that project.
Attorney McMahon, Mayor Commissioner, one thing you asked me to address with the commission certainly with Paul's on time passing is what to do with that vacant seat. Um, I, I think in every other situation that we've had, we've had a number of months, perhaps a year or more between that person's resignation or their removal from commission. And so in those instances, we've appointed somebody to fill that slot. Um, under this circumstance, I think we're looking at a very short period of time before our election. And so there's a couple of different options we have. Uh, there's some things I've been thinking about. Um, I'll, I'll wait to elaborate until we finish up to see if we have any write-ins. Um, once we get past that point and we can kind of reevaluate it, and there's a few different options we have as far as deciding to appoint an individual or to ride it out until election period. So that may also have something to do with what other items we have coming up for approval. And some of the items that are going to be on our agenda that we can anticipate. So happy to elaborate for you if need be, or if you have any questions, I'm happy to stand for questions.
As far as with the uh, people that had to apply by January 4th. I understand that now it's right and is there going to be another, with the circumstance that happened? There's not going to be a window for anyone else to apply for the position besides just the write-ins?
My understanding from, from looking at it is that we've got a time period in which you can do a write-in. Um, and if that doesn't occur within that time period, we should be limited as far as who can run for that seat.
How long is the period of the, of the write-ins?
I believe it's tomorrow.
Tomorrow, 9th and 5th.
So just one day?
Right.
It's also a day to retract your name, right, as well?
Yes.
Yeah, so you can, the ones that did file, they can remove their name if they so choose.
Yeah, so there's a few things that could happen between now and the close of business tomorrow.
Right.
I prefer to have that, that deadline told and then we can kind of evaluate where we are and what might be the best way to proceed.
Is this stuff that you need to go through the Secretary of State with or is it stuff that you are pertaining to that you won't?
No, I, I think it's just different options that we have, taking a look at being able to appoint somebody for that seat. Um, taking into consideration by the time we had our next meeting, have it on the agenda, you know, go out for advertising, appoint that person. The meeting after that, if they're available, how much time did they have? And is that really fair to that individual or who's coming up on the election process also? So there's a number of different things to take into consideration. I think if we had a year before that, that seat was up for reelection, we have different circumstances. And would be put in the position to tonight, have something on the agenda to move forward. But given the short time we have for the election and the fact that tomorrow evening tolls the, the write-in. We're in a much better position after that to sort of figure out what our options are and what might be the best way to proceed.
Okay.
Thank you.
I have a, just going through my notes here the other day. And uh, wondering, I don't know if this would go for you, for Crystal, or who would it go to regarding the uh, the property on 10 West Central Avenue, there's a building that we were talking about.
Yeah.
So I don't know who, I need to address that to.
Well, I can tell you the information that I have is that it's, it's owned by a corporation. And it appears that that corporation is no longer in good standing with the Secretary of State. That's my understanding, the registered agent for that corporation. So um, if, if I were to be sued individually for bumping into your car in the parking lot, you'd come sue me and serve me individually. If it was a corporation that did that, rather than serve that employee, right, as a registered agent. And so the registered agent is an attorney that's in Hobbs. And so we've been trying to get with a registered agent to decide what to do. Uh, there are a number of tax liens on that property. And so there are a number of people ahead of us that perceive some value in that property. And to take a look at when they could get their liens paid. And so those tax liens, what they're looking for is a sale of the property. And they certainly don't understand the condition that the property is in. And so what we're trying to do is to get the attorney in Hobbs to identify who all has liens on that piece of property. Identify the condition and see if those lien holders wouldn't assign over to either the City of Livingston or another entity the rights they have in those liens. And then that individual could move forward, let's say there was another corporation that wanted to demolish the building and build something else. They could assign those liens, that person could have some agreement to move forward and get that taken care of. It's just that at this particular point, there's not a company to serve. So if we serve them, um, they're not in good standing, they don't exist anymore, they're not um, here as, as a person anymore. And so we could bring a lawsuit, but I don't know if that lawsuit would be valid if we went forward with the condemnation. We can send it to the attorney, but it, but it really doesn't have any kind of an effect. So it's a very unique situation over there that I don't think there's a really easy answer other than having the individuals that have liens against the property, assign those into an entity. That entity might foreclose those liens because that is a process that was started while the corporation was living on the system. And, and that may be the way to actually get that property into an entity to do something constructive with it. It's not as if, you know, if the company still existed, the LLC, there's an easy pathway to get that done. It's, it's just that you want to, you know, resolve that with somebody, but there's not a person on the other end of the phone, so to speak, to, to get that resolution approved. So that's kind of where we are from the legal standpoint.
Are we going to move over?
Well, what's going to happen is the attorney in Hobbs has to be able to communicate the information that I gave to him to the lien holders of what the actual condition of the property is. Because those lien holders aren't ones that are local. And so when they file a lien on a piece of property, they might look on Zillow and just see what the value of that is and get some idea. I've got a lien, it's worth X number of dollars based on what's sold in that there. And so by calling them up, me calling them up, saying, hey, um, it's really not worth anything, here's the condition. I don't know if they're going to take my word for it, but if they can talk to the representative from the company and he can provide them the same information I sent to him as far as the condition, the risks to everybody else. Um, that's a way to get those lien holders to either release their lien. Yeah, so it's certainly not easy, not easy at all. And it's a small piece of property.
Right.
Um, it's not like it's a whole city block and so.
Like I said, that building's not getting any better?
No.
That's my concern.
Yeah, yeah. And so I think there are some procedures that the city could do if it gets to a point where they recognize an emergency situation. But there are processes that code enforcement would have to do to make that declaration. Then in that instance, the city could say, um, whether there's an owner or not, that is, that is here. Um, it poses a immediate risk to the safety, public health and well-being of the residents or whoever drives down that alley. And then the city has to take over doing the condemnation. What happens though is when the city takes that over, does the condemnation, they have to pay for it. And then their lien for the condemnation gets in line behind all the other liens that are there. And so in effect, what you do is you take a dilapidated building that's got more risk to it than, than value. And you have changed the value of that piece of property a hundredfold or a thousandfold to the lien holders. So if we knock it down and get rid of all the asbestos, if asbestos is there or some of the other things. Now we go to the lien holders and say, hey, we'd like that piece of property. They're going to say, well, thank you, you've changed it from an eyesore and something we can't get rid of to a vacant lot that somebody could build on now. We're really going to dig our heels in until this gets sold. We're really gonna dig our heels in until this gets sold.
I'm just worried about somebody getting hurt, and we're really gonna be.
But it's not a big, you know.
Yeah, I mean, it's.
It's the home of the building, so if somebody does get hurt, that's.
We don't, it's just a balancing act between us looking at, um, if it does look like it's gonna collapse and it does present that immediate, you know, imminent risk of serious harm to somebody, then we're forced to go ahead and do that. But I want you guys to understand that those costs associated with that are gonna be ones we're probably not ever gonna recover.
Right.
And what we're doing is increasing the value of that asset to the people that do hold that lien. And so if there's another option that somebody has that I haven't thought of, I'm more than happy to take a look at it and evaluate it. But it's, it's not an easy problem to solve. It, it's just gonna come down to, do we wait it out and try to get the lien holders to release and assign that to somebody? Or is it a situation where it's about to fall over and we have to take some, uh, action based on public risk?
Okay.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Patrick.
Sure, you're welcome.
Moving on to, uh, public comment. Would anybody have anything to follow up on? Yes.
This is for, um, Mr. Miranda. Um, I've been here in Lovington all my life. I'm having a little bit of trouble. When Daddy Cabero was here in charge, and when him was here, we didn't have a problem. Everybody that goes to the police station is the case. Is the case. You might not know it, but everybody is the case. And I'm having a hard time talking to you. I go into that office, I go to the police department, you're busy, you have other cases. We are a case. Each of us that goes to the police station is a case. Maybe we can help your case, if you're working on a case. And I'm having trouble getting an appointment.
Coming at nine o'clock tomorrow morning?
I work. I'm gonna have to, this is my daughter Casey.
I, I work case for you.
Yeah, we have worked together.
We'll come in at a time and help you.
And I need to talk to you.
You need to ask me for me directly.
Okay, I, I did, I did. And I'm having a hard time right now.
I'll meet with you at any time.
Okay, thank you very much.
You bet.
Is there any other public comment? There's no other public comment moving to non-action on this street?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioner, the only non-action item on the agenda tonight is the discussion of the senior citizens center board appointment.
Yes, sir, all three terms have expired. All three wish to continue serving, but if anybody wishes to serve, they can contact City Hall or Senior Citizens Center. We will approve the position at the January 24th.
One thing, uh, Jaylen, how is their, their, uh, I mean, I don't remember the name, but how are they participating? Are they showing up to the record meetings? Do they keep, uh, some sort of?
I believe Faye does, and I believe she does not have trouble with them, she has, but.
Yes, well, those three ladies, yeah, they're pretty active. So, yeah. Okay. Pretty active media in the understate. Is there any questions by the board? There's no questions by the board, do I have a motion?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make the motion for resolutions 2022-001, approval of the ETC board appointments with, uh, Ms. Benny Price wanting to be reappointed, Ms. Steve Carr wanting to be reappointed, Ms. Julie Myers wanting to be reappointed, and also the new one coming in, Ms. Marla Price, to be accepted as the board appointment.
Second.
Motion was made by Mr. Bernard, seconded by Mr. Gandy. Is there any further discussion?
There's no further discussion.
Can I be asked?
Yeah.
Ms. Marla Price. I wasn't surprised, but it's just too many. I said it, Alan. I'll shoot you later, Dr. Brown.
Price is right.
Yeah, whatever.
They are not.
They're not, they're not kin.
They are sister laws.
Sister.
Yeah. I mean, I, I, I don't know, you know, it's, it's not really like a nepotism issue. And, uh, you know, there could be just the same conflict between close friends versus relatives. You know, I, I don't know, I don't know if there's a conflict, I think it's just a matter of.
They're, they're a vibrant board, they're not.
They serve a lot of boards, and, and what's their heart for, for, um, volunteering and spending their time and stuff like that, but we have another, uh, person that was, I, I think we should choose that, that's just my personal opinion, nothing against Marla, you know. She serves on another board, doesn't she?
Uh, she needs to, uh, use board.
That's kind of real bad, so, I think, so, that's just me. That was the motion, okay.
So, yeah. You have a question?
Yeah, I just wanted to make it clear with everybody, so, okay. No problem.
Mr. Gandy?
No.
Mr. Butcher?
Yes.
Mr. Bo?
Yes.
Where to be at?
Yes.
Mr. Bass, do you have, uh, do you have?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for resolution 2022-002, approval of health insurance rebate of 10% back to employees.
Motion made by Commissioner Bernard, seconded by Commissioner Bo. Uh, I'll, I'll talk for our treasurer right now. Uh, so the rebate check, uh, $216,000, out of $216,000, 90% is paid by the citizen, uh, citizens of Lovington, which, uh, the city of Lovington, and 10% is paid by the employee. So if, uh, what it is, uh, out of the 216,000 rebate, the employees receive their 10% they pay back into, uh, in form of credit to their, uh, bravery, uh, what, what they normally pay in, uh, insurance offer checks, so that's all that is. They're entitled to it, but there's a process, and we'll have to, there's a process, so that's go to the board to release the funds, uh, for accounting practices. And so that, that's the process we'll take.
Would that be for city citizens only?
No, city, uh, uh, city, the ones that pay into the healthcare insurance, uh, city employees, yes.
Okay, well, you just, you said that, uh.
90%, the taxpayers, the taxpayers pay 90%, the employees pay 10%. So, uh, the employees.
More county tax.
So out of the 10, uh, 216,000, they're entitled to 10% of that 216,000. Uh, we see, uh, we, uh, receive money in form of a credit to their, what they get, withdraw, withdraw on the insurance. So it just might just be one, that may add up to whatever it is. So, it's, um, so, pretty, pretty good, uh, basis of that.
So, Mr. Mayor, Commissioner, I just want to make sure it's clear, I, I don't know if this is clear in the, um, resolution. But I think what you were describing is that if, um, you had three different individuals, um, one didn't pay health insurance, they were not gonna receive any kind of refund.
That's true.
And if, if the second individual was a single person, um, they would receive a different amount on their refund. And the third person who had family and children and everything else, right?
Yes.
And so as long as the resolution reflects that, so that we have, um, and, and we, you could just move to amend the resolution to reflect the discussion here at the seat. The cleanest way to go, so it's clear based on our discussion. And if somebody just looked at the resolution and wasn't privy to the discussion or the council meeting notes or minutes, they would understand what's happening.
There probably ought to be a per rata amendment as well, based on how much they paid in through the year.
Well, it's, no, no, it has to be, because this is a rebate, a one-time rebate, and it's 216,000. It's a one-time, next year we may not get a rebate depending on how many, uh, I mean, uh.
You know, for the example, not having been employed last year, it wouldn't be paraded for me.
No.
So we would have to make a amendment.
This is for 2020, this is for 2020 and 2021.
Right.
That's what it is.
This rule, and I'd like to make a motion, or we amend that resolution for single and family rebates at 10%. We can, uh.
Well, if I may, it, it's just not limited to single, because I think we have a single person, we have a single person with children, and then we have a married person with families. And so what I'm saying is if Mr. Smith paid in X per month for health insurance, but Mrs. Jones paid in 2X, then when we take a look at what rebates go back, it wouldn't be fair to give Mr. Smith the same amount as Mrs. Jones. So it has to, you know, correlate to the, what they pay in versus what they give back. Does that, does that make sense? Okay. Okay. So, I'm sorry, I, I wasn't clear.
No, I missed that, you know, that was, say, amended to where the, it's a single with children, single with, uh, with children, family with children. Now, this is probably screwed up, but, uh, I think it's, I think Patrick got it wrong. Yeah.
We get to say it reflects what they pay in, because someone may have vision on top of that, or dental, or so. It's tied directly to what they paid during those years. Each individual versus just one lump sum divided by a whole tier. And, and the other thing you need to take a look at, it will be for employees current as of what date? Because I could have been an employee in 2020 and not be an employee as far as today's date. So that's something else that you need to take a look at. So, and, and that's to an employee who is employed by the city of Lovington on X date, and then that, that would clarify it, so. Because you could have somebody that was employed for the year of 2020, not employed in 2021, so they're not currently an employee, but if the rebate covers those two years, do you plan on giving that rebate back to them if they're not an employee? So. So we need to figure out, because there will be probably some money going to go. Yeah. If, if you want to do it that way, I, it's awfully confusing.
It is.
My, my, my recommendation, I think one of the things we talked about, is just not to bill for the next cycle. And that's a much cleaner way to do it for a number of reasons, because it's to whoever is employed under the next cycle. And they just don't get the invoice from the city. And then you don't have to calculate exactly what each of them pays because their invoice doesn't.
Yeah.
You're not physically handing them a check. But what you're saying is, we're not gonna invoice you, so in a roundabout way, you're kind of getting that back. But you, you also need, the commission also needs to take a look at, are we limiting it to employees that were employed on a certain date? Or is it every single employee that was employed over that 2020, 21 time period?
So how do you, how do y'all feel if we just go ahead and table this and get it straight and bring it back to the next commission meeting? So we can have a proper decision. What's that? Or, uh, it's, that's, that's a lot of stuff to just take in and roll with it right now. Just saying, I, I make a motion, we just table it. Simple test, well.
Well, I can do.
But, you know, we're just dropping away.
It, I mean, it's entirely up to, somebody would have to move to table. But I, I think since you're here, it's certainly a good idea.
We got there first, first go around, so I understand what Patrick and you think, you just write it out.
I can't, I'm not elected by anybody in town, so. I'm just saying, those are good questions because who are we giving it to?
Yeah, and, and that, that's what was instructed, uh, uh, percentage, 10%. And, 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 yeah, it makes it simplified, it's just not pay, there's X amount paid in per month, and, uh, and there's X amount given back. So, uh, if we choose to credit on that, that pay period, then it's whatever's left in, just credit the next pay period, and, and that, that will eliminate the 10% that will be paid back.
So say that one more time, so, I'm just clear, that's all. So, so, say what, say what you said one more time. So everyone make sure that I understand that we're, we're giving one month of health insurance. Hey, during, during the period.
Because each pay period, each pay period, uh, yeah, each time, uh, they, they pay into insurance, we pay 9%, they pay 10%. So, um, let's say their next pay period, if we, uh, give them a 10, uh, give them the credit, that's automatically give them 10%, does it pay 10% into that pay period? Every, every pay period, they pay into their insurance at, at a 10% rate, we pay 90, they pay 10. So that automatically that's already done, the 10%, but does it exceed the, the, let's say, for instance, uh.
My 10% is a way different, so I'm gonna say.
No, it's 10%, 10%, because we pay 9 when they pay 10.
Right, that's, they pay 90%.
No, we pay 9.
What I'm saying is, the city pays 90%.
Correct.
They pay 10%.
Yes.
But we pay on a monthly deal, they pay on a bi, bi-weekly deal. So there's a, there's a difference in pay here, and when you say 10%, I mean, you're basing that off of a year. And if you deduct that from what you're trying to say there, the math's not really close. I'm, I'm buying it with what you're trying to do on a.
As long as it don't exceed the 10% of 216,000, uh, because you've got an X amount, let's say it's 20,016 bucks, let's say that. As long as it doesn't exceed that.
The, the two, two pay periods for that month don't exceed the $216,000. Yeah, 216,000, so, uh, okay.
There's a certain amount that cannot exceed.
Yeah, it's just when it says 10%, somebody's gonna juggle that around and see what Patrick's saying, so.
Mary?
Yes, ma'am.
The, the credit that they gave, of course, something billed.
Yeah, it's a credit.
We, we have not been billed, it'll be two and a half months, but we did not get billed by United Healthcare. So I wish you could look at it, two and a half months, the employee won't have to sign an agreement.
But, 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 Shane, Shane. The thing about it is, it cannot exceed 20,016,000, that's what it cannot exceed. It's whatever, I'm, I'm, yeah, so it's 21, 21,600, excuse me. It cannot exceed that amount because 10% out of the 216,000 is 20, 21,600. So as long as it doesn't exceed 21,600, then, then we're, we're in the red, or in the black.
21,000.
Yeah, it has to be 10% only of what, what we were credited of. We can't, we can't go beyond it, because if, let's say for two and a half months, it exceeds 21,600, then we're giving them too much, it cannot exceed that number. That's what I'm saying. It only can be 10% of what was given back. Because the only reason why I'm saying that, because right now, your insurance, I mean, there's probably a change from the previous year, 2020, 2021, it could have been different, is what I'm saying. I, we're only paying 8,000, uh, monthly, or 81,000 versus 90,000, so.
Well, we, we kind of like it, what they pay.
Yeah, the W2s will show accumulated amount paid. Oh, we'll show that.
My view of it is 22,000 or about, you know, we have to pay.
My view of it is 22,000 or about, you know, if we have kids or what, you know, every employee's paying 10%, I understand all that. And that's all we was agreeing on, giving them 10% back. I mean, of the 20,000, and then you could start throwing in, well, if they have kids or this and that.
I think as long as it's clear, now, I think as long as it's clear, it's, it's of, of the 216,000, 10% of that, which is 21,600 to be distributed to the employees that were, that, that paid into healthcare here in 2021, 2020, 2021, they're entitled to. I think that, that portion that Patrick's referring to is that, to ensure that they, it is equally distributed. That's what Patrick's saying. The motion is to give back 10% of the 216,000 to the individuals paid into the healthcare here in 2020 and 2021. The amount of portion is, is a greater, who receives the amount, what amount they receive per customer that is paid into.
Maybe we should, maybe we should issue a check instead of trying to figure out how much not to bill them and not to do that.
So, so I have a question.
Probably.
Let me stir the pot here for more of the confusion. We're saying, we've got a, we've got a rebate for 2020 and 21. So you, you have to also calculate, and during 2021, we had a higher count of employees. So due to the reduction in employees, we got a rebate because we were paying more in, because we had calculated for that higher amount of employees. So actually, the employee is probably getting a higher percentage on, on the way you're trying to do things than what's actually owed. So I, I, you know, so you give me some, I really, for many reasons. So I'm saying that some of that money is, are you going to give that back to those people that no longer work here, which you're not? Or I would hope like that we're not. The, you know, only the people that are employed here at the current time, you know, for this period. I, I get, give them a portion of that money back. But it's the fact that, that the percentage is, is way kind of funky. Because all that percentage, I can see where, where you let them, you know, we pick up that tab for the employees we have for one month. You know, whatever that cost is, they're 10% for that one month. We pick that up for a month. And then whatever's left is left. You know, as long as it doesn't exceed that 200 and, or 21,600. So that's, I, I get that part, but yeah, we just need to clarify the fact that they need to be, they need to be employed, had to be employed with us from since whenever the start of the fiscal year was, and that from there. So as long as that's pretty clear and they're getting just, you know, paychecks worth of their 10% not removed, then I can, I, I understand. That'll make that clear, if you ever look like I didn't make any sense at all.
Yeah, I think I can simplify it quite a bit, just with writing a payroll report, determining what people paid in, in those time periods, and we can divvy up the 21,600 equally. And then, and then we'll just have to determine whether we're cutting a check, because if you cut a check, you're talking about taxable income versus.
Right.
Yes, so anyone who started July 1st, 2021 or later would not be eligible for whatever we're getting, correct? Because that's, that's, that's the new fiscal year. Because I have a lot of.
July 20.
July 1, 2021.
July, yeah, July 1, 2021. That's a little separate. We're talking about fiscal year of July 20 to, uh, 2021, fiscal year, 2020 to 2021.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but we don't start our insurance the same time we start our year.
Yeah, just every year. Every year we pay.
Yeah, but we don't start it at the fiscal year.
Well, we, we start doing that.
Do we start it doing that? Okay, clear for. So that's my company and that company and this company. Sometimes they all run together, so that's why I was just making sure, because the one time I thought we used to have our, our renewal at a different time in our fiscal year, so we started. Okay, all right, thank you.
I mean, I guess, I guess there's a number of things that we could take a look at. I think it needs to be clear from the board, or excuse me, the commission, which employees we're talking, over what period were they, were employed and are still employed with the city as of a certain date. The other thing I think that's helpful, like anecdotal information, would be if Shannon could tell us what, what's, for, for the month of December, for example, December 21, what did all of the city employees pay for health insurance? And that will give you a perspective of how far that $20,000 goes, perhaps. It's not absolutely clear, because we may have had some employees that are here now that weren't back in 2020, and there are some 2020 employees that aren't here today, so where does that money go? But it'll kind of give you an idea of what are we talking about? How long is, how far does that 20,000 stretch? So I don't know what city employees, if you added them all up for the month of December 2021, just to give you a perspective, anecdotal information, how, how far is that 20,000 going to get you? And then we've got to be absolutely clear about, because we don't want to treat anybody differently. So we need to be absolutely clear about what group of employees are we talking about? This start date, they've got to have started on this date and continuously work for us up to and including whatever the date you decide to give them, so.
You could say the ones who were employed through the fiscal year of 2020.
And are still employed as of January 10th. I'm not saying that's the date to use, I'm just saying that's. That way, when Ms. Kennedy goes back and takes a look at, you know, what did those people pay? How are we going to divide it up proportionally? If you want to do that, then she's got an idea of, here's the people I'm talking about that fit on that list. And then you've got to be able to explain to the other employees that started a little bit after that, why they're not getting a, not only the employees, but the public, so it is a very sticky situation.
All the way to Kennedy.
I don't know if we can place all the burden on Ms. Kennedy.
I think it will have to be, because it's 10% of the fiscal year 2020, 2021, and that's that 10%. And it's 10% of the 216,000, which is approximately 21,600. They, they contribute to their, so, and they're entitled to that. How we give it back has to go to the tosses, and the treasury can define that better than what we defined it today, and, and bring the data back, or export it and present it to us, if you, if that's adequate time, and we can.
Yeah, I think that if we, if we were to table it, as was suggested, then that report would give us a lot more basis to go off of to make a decision.
I think that, that will be fair to the, to the board as well as the citizens, better understanding.
And then motion, we, Teddy will, it's, 20, 2022, go 22 until the next meeting. Is there any other questions? No further questions, real call, Shane.
Commissioner Butcher?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowe?
Yes.
Commissioner Blaine?
Yes.
Yes. It's table. Go ahead, motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for resolution 2022-003, approval of giving back 40 hours to the remaining 6%.
Second, motion was made by Mr. Gandy, second by Mr. Bernard. On 40 hours, the treasury come up with the, the figures prior to Cindy, Miss Cindy, Pat's Monday with us. Tracy was giving the information stating that the cost, there's no cost, the city would be 13,834 dollars per month, currently sitting on, in our general fund, which that, that money would come from general fund. City is currently sitting on a little over $3 million in our general fund, and that would just take from the general fund on a monthly scale, bring everybody back to 40 hours. This will include, currently would include the city hall staff, MBD staff, road staff, parks and rec staff, cemetery staff, all of them will be brought back in 40 hours. Also included, the library staff will be all brought back in 40 hours. Oh, and as well as animal ink code. I'm sorry, thank you. And that's, you're looking at a figure of 13,000. The other item on that, I was wanting to report, if it approved, on how the board would like to proceed forward in, in, in hours here at MBD as well as here at city hall, or if we can look at back, went back to eight to five, nine to five, to, to add 40 hours. Previously, the way it was said was four and a half days per week. So I just wanted to bring the.
If I may, I can give the hours, if you guys don't remember the hours, we're open. Seven, seven thirty to four thirty, Monday to Thursday, and Friday was seven thirty to eleven.
So we can, we can either go back to Monday through Friday, eight to five, within one hour lunch, nine to five, within one hour lunch, or whatever you decided to, how, how we bring back 40 hours. Many involve staff and secretaries for department.
And that's, American commissioners, we got the senior citizens and the, in my department, the fire marshal's office and administrative staff.
Right, staff involves. Yes, so do we want them to work from eight to five, within an hour lunch, or nine to five? How do you want to bring this one up? Yes. It will prove very quickly.
As far as I'm concerned, I'd love to give everybody back 40 hours, and for the employees in the city of Livingston, and I think they all know that. But again, as I've stated numerous times, without having anything in front of me to go over, I cannot find myself to vote for this, because I don't have anything to look at, no data, no figures, no cost analysis. The last thing I want to do is tell the city employees that, you know what, we're back to 40 hours, and three months down the road, hey, guys, tough luck, we got to take it back because we can't afford it. So until I get figures, facts, data in front of me, I cannot approve this myself.
Commissioner Bowe, I would suggest you contact the treasury's office when you have voices, something on the table, sit down and talk to them, spend that, or time to gather that information.
I did have a voice fail, suggesting what I would like, and I understand. I'm not holding this gentleman responsible, she just started, but there are other people in that office that can get reports together for this. So as much as I like to say, you know, I understand, I understand also that I've been asking for transparency the past three years. I've been asking for records, for files, for data, projections, haven't received anything. So I put, I put down now and saying, if I don't have stuff in front of me, I'm not going to vote.
And I also want to say that transparency takes both, both sides. Either you, a lot of us as boards, we can ask for a lot of information, but also, we have to also answer emails, answer texts, answer phone calls, and go down and sit down with their folks and get accurate information. I think a visit to, to staffing is always helpful, especially not just making a phone call or, or just requesting data. I think also sitting down and finding how it worked from A to Z is, is also vital in making the decision, when you make decisions. So understand your point, commissioners, both, but it also requires.
Well, I agree 100%, because as I said before, by not having up-to-date figures, by not having accurate figures, how as we as commissioners can we make informed, educated decisions?
Because there's a lot of decisions to be made up here at, at the level. We also have to take our time to come and talk to staff individually, and sit down with them and review our office, because there's a lot of times that just the paper in front of us doesn't take the whole game into play. So is what I'm referring to, is that sometimes go in and talk to treasury's office and find out how to get from A to Z, and where does this figure come about, these lots of order. Adjustment on state.
I just put out there, what I'd like to see moving forward.
Yes. Sure, it is, other discussion.
I'm just tired of nobody being at work, so. I'm running right into bankruptcy if I go, at least for 40 hours, so.
Is there any other question about the board? There's no other question about the board, real call, Shane.
Commissioner Bowe?
No.
Commissioner Butcher?
Yes.
Commissioner Gandy?
Yes.
Commissioner Vito?
Yes.
Resolution passes. Go ahead, motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for resolution 2022-04, approval of bid for senior citizens' center door repair.
Second, motion was made by Mr. Gandy, second by Mr. Bernard.
Mayor, commissioners, this, this bid was done by two different bidders. It was over budget as far as the grant funding was concerned, with it being about $9,000 over budget. So the remainder balance of, of this state appropriation funding would be of around there operating budget. Doors. All the doors for the entire building.
All the doors?
Yes.
Okay, I would think of one center door. It's got to be.
It's all about exterior doors.
Okay.
And it is re, uh, reimbursed?
Yes.
Yes. What was the other?
Uh, the other bid was 82,780, and the state appropriated funds was roughly 59,000.
So, so I have the question that, are they going to be able to stick with this bid due to the fact that the increase in construction costs, wages and everything of this bid?
This has been a, it's a recent bid, so this was recently, as in the last couple weeks.
Okay, I was just, everything goes up every, every weekend.
Yes, sir.
So I want to make sure we got stuck with something that's, man, $154,000.
Is there any other questions about our board? There's no more questions about the board, real call, Shane.
Commissioner Gandy?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowe?
Yes.
Commissioner Butcher?
Yes.
Yes. Resolution passes. Go ahead, motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make motion for resolution 2022-05, approval of the. Understanding between the city of Livingston and the First United Methodist Church.
Second. Motion was made by Mr. Gandy and second by Mr. Bernard.
I will stand for questions, if you have any.
There's just one, one thing, American commissioners, I have to point out, is that what's on the agenda says approval of a memorandum of understanding. And what's on the actual resolution is approving the mayor to enter into a resolution. So there's negotiations to take place between the mayor and First United Methodist Church if this resolution gets approved. So the resolution indicates that you, the mayor, or your designated me, is going to go negotiate an MOU, where what's on the agenda says you're actually approving the MOU. So I just want to clarify that. I think it's the same with Dryland's brewing. I think it's the same with Drylands Brewing also, but I just want to point that out.
Yes. Any contract stake?
Yeah, and the reason for that is just in case, particularly with the Methodist Church, the board also has to approve it, right? And so we will be able to take the resolution that is what's already been kind of written out and take it to them. And if there's any particular crazy move change that they would like to implement at that point, they would be able to come back and then say, hey, no, we are not for this, or we don't like this. We don't foresee anything like that happening. I just did want to have that because they also have to have it approved by their board.
So do I need to withdraw my motion and state what's on the resolution? That'd be, that'd be cleaner?
Well, I, I think as long as we have in minutes that the resolution reflects, and let me get a copy of this back up here so we can take a look at it. And you can have it, you can see it on yours, just a moment for these. So it says 2022-005 says a resolution approving the mayor to enter into a memorandum of understanding, MOU, between the city. And then, you know, there's like a page here that says, we've got this signed, we're going to do this, and we're going to go negotiate. So it's a little bit different. I'm not saying you have to withdraw or amend. I just want you guys to understand that what you're approving, if you approve that resolution, it's directing the mayor or his designated need to go negotiate with the Methodist Church. It's not like we have terms that, terms and conditions of an MOU that you're looking at to approve. We've got to go negotiate. So that's my understanding. Mayor Commissioners, so this originally started back in 2019, I believe, was when Sidman Williams and I had gone and had a meeting with their board at the church. Those terms are there, but there's been a changeover in their board as well as the preacher as well. And so they were wanting to update the MOU, and that was the reason behind bringing in MOU without having an actual MOU, instead of approving it and having to come back and forth. That's what this was. Right, that makes perfect sense. I just want to make sure you understand it's just a little bit. And that's a good way to do it because just like we do with the county, there is another board or commission that needs to review, and they may have some additions or changes or subtractions. I just want to make sure you're clear that you're not approving an MOU, you're approving the mayor to go negotiate and enter into an MOU with, with this church. And I think Drylands is the same.
Yes, sir.
And all you're really doing is giving the mayor the authority to go negotiate that. That MOU comes back to the commission for approval, just like it would for the board. So it's, it's really not anything out of the ordinary. I just need to clarify that.
Yeah, as long as the board has the bottom say.
The commission, yes.
Do you want to do something?
No, we're good, we're good. We just all understand that it's worded just a little bit different that you're going, this is not an actual MOU. I'm good with what I have. If the stage rate to resolution, that doesn't make a issue.
Okay. Do you have anything else? Do you also want to make a comment off, off Drylands as well? Is it the same?
It's the same thing. So I do want to point out that the one on the Methodist Church will actually be on the Methodist Church parking lot. It'll be a small corner. It does not take away from their parking spaces. And that one is on actual property. The one on Drylands is actually going to be on what will be considered NMDOT right away. But since it does kind of touch theirs, we wanted to be able to make sure that everybody was taken care of and protected. Once we have these MOUs, then we'll start working with Crystal on getting some of those permitting started and then going with the city and the state. And then, then we'll get actually started.
So how is that received with the right of way? How is that coming into play? What are you discussing with them or are they?
So it'll be honestly more up to the state. It does actually, because the way the sign will go is the piece of it will overlay into Drylands property. And then the other piece will be, it's literally the line of what is right away, what is Drylands property. And so it's really just to make sure that Drylands is also taken care of. DOT has been in the loop since this project started, and they have been working with us. So we are kind of waiting for them to start breaking down the ground before we go in with our construction. The project has started, and they are currently being constructed at Old Times.
I just wanted to make sure that you had communication with them, not that the sign is up and they're going to come in and. You know, so.
So, and also the state does have where they grant access, they grant you an encroachment in that easement. And that's where we would work with the state on making sure that is bid.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? No further discussion, roll call.
So we're doing Methodist Church.
Right.
Commissioner Gandy?
Yes.
Commissioner Butcher?
Yes.
Commissioner Bo?
Yes.
Senator D. O.
Yes.
Resolution passing, go ahead, motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make motion for resolution 2022-006, approval of a memorandum of understanding between the city of Livingston and Drylands.
Second. Motion was made by Mr. Gandy, second by Mr. Bo. Is there any further questions?
No, sir, I don't.
No further questions, roll call, Shannon.
Commissioner Butcher?
Yes.
Commissioner Bo?
Yes.
Commissioner Gandy?
Yes.
Senator D. O.
Yes. Resolution passes. Do you have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make motion for resolution 2022-007, approval to proceed with Jackson Street budget.
Second. Motion was made by Mr. Gandy, second by Mr. Bernard.
Mayor Commissioners, I'd like, I'd like you to actually amend your motion to table this. What is happening on this project is we went and did some core sampling to see if the road could be milled and filled as designed. The asphalt is actually not thick enough to do a mill and build project. It would actually hit into the base, then we'd have expenditure costs for redoing the base. It'd go all haywire. So we cannot proceed with that part. So we're going back to the drawing board with design. We have spoke with, with Pedigree and Associates, and we've also spoke to a contractor on this that we've come up with a plan to, it's called the Bow Maggie. And what they'll do is they will remove the asphalt and the base. They will reclaim that product and use all that as new base, and then put a new asphalt on top of that. This will be a much better road when we're done than the mill and bill would have been to begin with. And so we're just giving the, the design team and the contractor a little bit of time to get those prices to you. They said they'd have them to me by the next meeting.
So we just need to do it for the next meeting?
Yes.
And can you elaborate on?
For the 24th.
The request, the extension on that as well?
Oh, yes. And I am going to be working on a letter to the state to give us an extension because this is the one that had to be done by the end of fiscal year, which means we had to have paperwork done by then. And so the project would actually have to be done the end of May, middle of June, to get paperwork done in time. So I'm going to write up a letter to ask the state to approve us with a little bit more time on this project, just because the delays of COVID, and then now the delays in finding the right design for it.
Yeah, because of costs.
Do you need to give that more time so you can find out back from the state or?
No, we're going to still go with the, because the contractor thinks he could be done with it in time, but we want to get ahead of that just in case we're not. Well, right now, it's still the same amount of time.
Right, right. But I mean, you know.
Well, so most of the time, any extensions like that, you usually ask for a six month at a time type of extension. So that's what I'll be requesting, and the contractor is very confident that he only needs a month or two extra, if any, so.
And what area, how much in the section is he going to be?
We are still looking at doing Main Street all the way to nine with that process.
Because I know you had.
With the same cost.
You had Main Street the second and second to ninth.
Yeah.
And they're just going to do it the same company, just going to do it all the way through?
Yes.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, can I amend by motion to table this until the next meeting, which will be January?
24th.
24th.
Second. Motion was made to table, second by Mr. Bernard. Further discussion? There's no further discussion, roll call.
Commissioner Bo?
Yes.
Commissioner Gandy?
Yes.
Commissioner Butcher?
Yes.
Senator D. O.
Yes. This is table. Go ahead, motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make motion for 2022-008, change order for Main Street waterline project.
Second. Motion was made by Mr. Gandy, second by Mr. Bernard.
Mayor Commissioners, wow, Scotty, you're going to love me for this, but you need to.
Are you kidding?
I was sorry, but the state did not get the paperwork in for the change order for me to put it in the agenda. So I do not have a cost on that to actually present to you this evening because the state has not got that.
Did not, tell her.
Mr. Mayor. We're going to have it by the next meeting.
We may have to do, that's where I'm talking about. We may have to do a special meeting because when the state gives me this, I have a 10-day gap to actually get an answer back from you guys all of it. So if they send it to me tomorrow, I will have to do a special meeting because the next meeting would not be within that 10-day period that I have to return an answer to.
Crystal, will the Tuesday special meeting be enough time?
If they get it back to me, yes. And that's where I'm saying we need to table this until the state gives us the appropriate cost.
What are the additional values that we're looking at? Additional, so it's about additional values.
The additional values?
Cost, that's what it says, additional cost.
And value. Okay, so there, within this project, when we moved the waterline, there were savings that we would incur during this contract. And then there's also a cost that would incur in the same thing. So that's what this paperwork from the state is supposed to be on what is, where exactly are we saving money? Where exactly are we having to spend? And they have not got that too.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to amend my motion to whenever Crystal notifies us that the state has achieved their goal, and then we can have a special meeting at that time. Is that made it up for you?
Yeah.
Yeah. The table.
I will second that. Motion was made, table resolution 2022-005, second by Mr. Bernard. Is there any further discussion? Further discussion, roll call, Shannon.
Commissioner Gandy?
What's this appointment, yes?
Commissioner Butcher?
Yes.
Commissioner Bo?
Yes.
Senator D. O.
Yes. Resolution is table. Go ahead, motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make motion for the financial report.
Motion was made by Commissioner. Gandy, second by Commissioner Bernard.
So on the financial report, what we're going to be working on going forward is presenting something with, with some graphics here showing kind of more of a overall actual versus budget view of where we stand with something that would be a little more useful for the public and kind of just knowing, getting some answers to questions that you may have as a public. Any kind of really detailed items will take place in the special meetings, and they'll be pretty robust in certain times of the year, such as budget times. For example, when we get this audit completed and when we get the quarterly reports completed. So in those special meetings, there will be an extensive financial report that'll be looked at by, you know, staff committee. And so that's just what we are strategizing to go forward, to be able to give a better indication of the financial report. Of course, there's always going to be items like this that we've discussed, but I think it could cut down on some of that discussion in those public meetings if we do it that way. So I'm willing to take any questions, though, if you have some suggestions for kind of that go-forward strategy.
Yes, I think Ms. Kennedy, and I think that's where Mr. Bo had mentioned earlier, most likely will be in contact with him, so the stuff he'd like to see on the financial report, I think, for him to make a decision on some of the items.
Right.
Most likely set up a form and told some commissioner, some of the district, maybe they have ideas, suggestions.
Absolutely.
On financial report. Help to make better sound decisions. I'd like to see that as well. Instead of calling the council table, it's going to be financial, yeah, because it will.
Yes.
Is there any other question? Okay. Do I have a final motion? Second. Motion was made by Mr. Bernard, second by Mr. Bo. Is there any further discussion? No further discussion, roll call, Shannon.
Commissioner Butcher?
Yes.
Commissioner Bo?
Yes.
Commissioner Gandy?
Yes.
Senator D. O.
Yes, we are.